A little after five, it's a committee of the whole meeting. The agenda is basically one item, the 2023 budget discussion. And so it's kind of going to be an open forum, just to get some feelings on today's budget. Maybe we'll just turn it over to Tim.
Sure, I handed out to the council, two packets of information. The one, the first one, looks like this, is the one I kind of just want to go over some highlights area. And really, the reason why I proposed the committee of the whole at this time is because, you know, based on discussions last year and things like that concerning, you know, our debt, I kind of wanted to present the two scenarios as the current budget stands. One, where we would issue debt for our street and storm sewer construction projects like we have in the past. And then obviously, if the council did not wish to issue debt for those construction type projects next year or into the future, what that scenario would look like and what work we have to do under both scenarios. So the other packet is just a draft dated today of where the kind of the budget stands. Obviously, we have another month and a half to go with the budget. You know, there'll be changes as we go along, and I'll track those changes and reissue new drafts as, you know, as material changes are made to that. So but just to kind of go over, you know, one of the biggest things that the city is, is that, you know, we're subject to municipal, state municipal levy limits. And on the first page, I show you that calculation. And basically, what it is, is that our tax levy can go up by our net new construction, which for 2022 was seven tenths of a percent, which equated to about $84,000, our levy can go up for net new construction. But also, we're allowed a debt service adjustment. So basically, what you do in the calculation is that the adjustment that we made in the 2022 levy limits is subtracted off, and then the new debt adjustment for 2023, based on what that number is, is added on. And our net tax levy for debt is going up 143,000. So if you take last year's levy, plus the net new construction, that service adjustment comes to an allowable levy of 13,750,751. And that's what I kind of use as the baseline for kind of determining the status of where the budget is. If you go to the second page of that, here's where, kind of based on where the budget is, the property tax levy surplus slash deficit. And basically, where the property tax levy comes from is all our budget expenditures. And then we estimate all the various revenues that we're going to get in, you know, state aids, user fees and things like that, permits, licensing. And we subtract it off the expenditures, what's left is usually what's levied is what the property tax levy. So basically, on the two scenarios you can see there is, is if we issue debt of approximately 1,925,000 to support those projects, you see we have a tax levy deficit of about 470,000. So that's the work that we would have to do under that scenario in order to balance the budget or get to that allowable levy. If we don't wish to issue any debt for those projects, and we still wish to actually do those construction projects, we would, that would, we would have to levy for that. And then that would make, increase that deficit to two point, almost 2.4 million dollars. So you can see on those different scenarios is with the issuance of debt, we have a deficit of 470 presently. And with the issuance of no debt, we're at about 2.4 million dollar deficit as the budget stands today. And that's kind of what I wanted to focus the discussion on tonight, because obviously, that's a, it's a major and important issue to discuss, you know, for the budget, because it really determines, you know, the path or work that we have to do on the budget. The rest of it is just, you know, some estimated tax rate information. Right now, with that levy limit, with the allowable levy limit, we're looking at an overall tax rate of about 40 cents or about 3.15% increase. And a lot of that increase is due to the fact that the way the state assesses manufacturing, we had the ratio of that down, and we lost about 17 million in manufacturing value. Not actual value, it's because residential and commercial is based on assessed. And State of Wisconsin values manufacturing based on equalized. And when you calculate that assessed to equalize ratio, you have to ratio the manufacturing to equate the two. And then with our ratio dropping to about 78%, because the residential housing market really increased, the market value really increased over the past year, and that resulted in that ratio driving down the manufacturing. And I got, I have a sheet I put together to kind of explain it, and I'll distribute it to the council so you can better understand how that calculation is done. And then I just have some tax rate history. And then obviously, on the page three, I have the hypothetical general obligation to, and the projects that that, if we wish to issue debt to fund those projects, what those projects are. And then on the bottom, showing that if we did our present debt level, what we're going to pay off, what we'd incur, what our debt would be at the end of 2023. So that's kind of in a nutshell what I really wanted to focus tonight's discussion. One of the major things I wanted to focus tonight's discussion on was, obviously, you know, how we're going to fund those street and storm sewer construction projects? Or if we, you know, if we're, or if we want to fund them at all, so.
Hey, Tim, could you, I'm sorry, I'm just not, I always say this, like, I can't keep up with your numbers. No offense, you do a great job saying them. Can you just go over again the two options that we have?
Okay.
And where we can follow along with that?
Sure, if you look on page two at the top, where I have the property tax levy surplus deficit scenarios?
Yep.
All right, so as a, as a, as the budget currently stands, I have for each of the funds that are partially funded by the property tax levy, I have the amounts there. And basically, they're all, all remain the same except for Public Works Construction Fund. And the difference there is 1.9, 1,925,000, because one assumes the issuance of general obligation notes to fund those construction projects, and the other one assumes that we wouldn't issue debt, but we would use property tax levy to fund those projects, which then obviously increases the amount of the deficit that we currently have. So right now, if we were to fund our construction projects like we have historically in the past, we're looking at a current deficit in the budget of about 470,000. And if we chose not to issue debt to fund those projects and still do those projects, we're looking at our approximate 2.4 million dollar budget deficit.
Okay, and that, so that's saying? Because my understanding is we can't, we, if we don't take out the debt for the streets, we can't levy for it, we can't put it into the levy.
No, we can levy for it. I'm just saying that because our allowable levy is only 13,750,000, that calculation, if we're to levy for that, then we would have to cut 2.4 million dollars somewhere in the budget to account for and to, for that levy, for, to support those construction projects.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Thank you.
So basically, what the bottom line is, is that to balance the budget, you would have to, under, if you were to issue GEO notes to fund those, we still have to cut 470,000 dollars out of the budget. If we weren't going to issue debt to fund those, but chose to fund those with the tax levy, then we have to cut 2.4 million dollars out of the budget under that scenario.
Okay.
Here, I have a question for Tim. So if we, if we, if we issued debt, we'll be short 470 and change. That, and let's assume that we took that through the levy, that's going to raise taxes 3.15%, is that correct? Is that what it would take to get us?
Right, the, the projected deficit or tax levy deficit is based on the allowable levy, on the calculation on the front. And that allowable levy translates into, based with the loss in value, about a 3.15% increase in the tax rate.
And that, and we fall within those limits? We, I mean?
Right, that's, the calculation is determining those limits, and that's the 13,750,000.
Got it, thank you.
Dean? So I just asked Tim if something was in the budget for sure. Coming at Public Works, you're going to see an agenda item about the expressway. And that's to the tune of, what, about a half a million dollars? They're proposing that, you know, maybe we take on a project that, which I personally believe is a state responsibility. And they're going to present an argument that we should do that, but that half a million dollars is in there. So if that half a million dollars was taken out, you know, that 470 would be covered. So there are some, some things coming forward yet that, you know, if you make a decision not to do it, it's going to save money.
I, I personally believe in, we're given money to help maintain them, but I think as we all know, A Street and Expressway has gone way to disrepair. And we've, we've done the best we could with what we're allocated. And the state has verbally committed down the road several years to do projects. I think, I think over like 28, 30, and 32 verbally, that, you know, we could get the length of, length of A Street done. But engineering feels that even, it may not last till 2028. There's some really bad sections, and specifically from Chase to the, to Grand Avenue, and the expressway is really bad. And so Public Works, you're going to discuss, and it's not fair because Paul's not here, but you're going to discuss that at Public Works on a potential solution or an idea that they came up with to replace it with asphalt, and to tune of about a half a million dollars. So if that project was decided not to be done, that would cover that, that deficit. If, if we chose to, if you, if the council chose to borrow, and you have that 470,000 dollar deficit, if we didn't do that project, that would be covered there. So we wouldn't have another deficit to come up with. But it still doesn't address the issue of the expressway. That'd be talked about at Public Works. We're trying, but it's, it's a big expense. And we all know A Street's going to be very expensive, millions and millions to redo, but it's still ultimately a state highway, and it's their responsibility.
Yeah, Mayor, that is, that's just from Chase Street to the?
To Grand.
To Grand, right?
Both sides.
Yeah, just an overlay.
It, it, they would have to remove the concrete, build up the base, and then overlay it with asphalt.
Yeah, okay.
But it's still about a half a million dollars.
Yeah.
And I ultimately believe that's the state's responsibility to rebuild that road.
Well, I tend, I tend to believe, I agree with you on that.
And I think we've done an amazing job, and it's lasted a very long time, and engineering can talk about that, you know, A Street, but you can only patch it so many times.
They only last so long, the beating they take.
Especially the expressway and A Street.
Okay, just so I'm clear on this. At the top of the second page, you have the 470,000 dollars if we take out debt. And then we would, at the bottom of the page, we would increase the taxes by 3.15% to pay for that 470,000? Or are we still short 470,000?
We're, we're, we're short, 470,000 would need to be reduced in the budget in order to get to that allowable levy, based on the calculation. The tax rate is based on the allowable levy of 13,750,000. So as you can see, there is the property tax levy on the 470 deficit projection. You see that right now, as the budget stands, we have the tax levies at 14,220 dollars and change. The levy that we're allowed under the law is 13,750,000, that's where that deficit comes from. The estimated tax rate is based on the municipal levy limit calculation of 13,750,000 dollars. And the reason why you're seeing that increase is because that loss in manufacturing value.
So we're still short 470,000?
Correct.
Either way, we're still going to be short either 470,000 or 2.4 million.
Yep.
On the next page, you have the Wisconsin Rapids taxes. Is that based off from a 100,000 dollar house or 108,000 dollar home?
Well, the problem is when you compare years, because we have reassessments, 100,000 dollar house in 2013 is technically 108,000 assessed value. So in order to kind of equate and make it the same, because usually when you have a reassessment, your levy doesn't go up, your rate drops. So basically, what I did is the average increase in residential property on a 100,000 dollar house was 108. So it's, 2022 is based on 108,000, and which would equate to, with the 3.1, about 44 dollars additional per city rate.
So no matter what, you're saying it's going to go up to 3.15%?
I'm saying if we, if the property tax levy was, if we allow, you know, the allowable levy limit is 13,700, if that ended up being our tax levy, it would equate to 3.15%. That's the maximum, it doesn't mean that you can lower the levy. Okay, I'm just saying, this is estimated taxes, if we were, if our tax levy was going to be based under the calculation under the law of the maximum total tax levy that we're allowed.
Okay, up here on page two, you have the, a few line items listed. The general fund, McMillan Library, debt service. Are you saying that somewhere in those items, we got to come up with 470,000 dollars? Or is there another area that we can come up with that somewhere?
Those are the ones that are, basically, yes, because those are the ones that are funded entirely or partially by the tax levy. You couldn't make reductions, like I can say, your tax incremental districts, because the increment that's generated must stay in that fund. So that, those, that's why you don't see those in there. And so those, you wouldn't be able to, any reduction you would make there would not equate to lowering the levy.
Thank you.
So in the, the budget summary draft, on the first page, second page, I guess, that's, that's the budget summary, so that's, that's the total of everything that we're talking about. We're down 2.1 million dollars. And everything, this is all, like, this, it's this minus what we just talked about, right? This, this is separate, this is adjustable, whereas the remainder of this overall budget is not adjustable?
Portions of it are not adjustable, portions of it are. The summary on you saying on page two of the, the budget draft?
Yeah.
Is all the funds, and that includes your tax incremental districts, your stormwater utility and such. So some of those would not be, you know, reductions in some of those funds wouldn't necess, wouldn't equate to reduction in the property tax levy. Because if, if the expenditure isn't being funded by the property tax levy, either in full or in part, you know, reducing it, it's not going to translate into the property tax levy coming down. And, and like I said before, the projected deficit is based on that tax levy calculation.
Okay.
Yeah. When, when we dispose of like equipment, we use those funds to help fund the replacement of that, so I count for that in the budget, yes. So any, like, right, so like if, right, yeah, so if the fire department, if we saw a fire department piece of equipment out of their, you know, we put that money back into their equipment fund, to fund the future. Right, so, you know, we, we have a variety of different funds. And I'll just use an example of a stormwater utility fund, you know, where we, we budget our maintenance for the stormwater utility infrastructure system, you know, and then the amount to, you know, the administrative costs to, you know, collect that fee and also keep all the modeling up to date. And we set that fee, but a portion of that fee goes to fund the storm sewer construction. And this year was approximately 156,000 dollars. Well, the construction for storm sewers accounted for in the Public Works Construction Fund, where all our construction projects are accounted for. And basically, a transfer from the stormwater utility of 156 goes, gets transferred to the Public Works, help offset that storm sewer construction. So we have various funds that, like, you know, especially with the debt service fund, that, you know, debt services offset by transfers from the TIF district for any tax incremental related debt. The Centrilia Center in past years to the lease revenues that we collected over there, portion of that was transferred to debt service. So that's kind of one of those transfers back and forth, and usually those will net to zero.
I did. I'll back up a little bit to the expressway project. So they've got budgeted in here 666,902 dollars. If we were to take that out of the budget, that would leave us, I mean, that would fill that 470,000 dollar void and leave us a surplus of 196, is that right?
Well, I mean, a portion of that cost is that historically, every year, we've done 150,000 to 200,000 dollars of patchwork on the expressways. You know, we remove the concrete and patch those, so that, you know, so typically in our budget, we'll have about 200,000. You know, the 666, really the difference, almost 466,000 to 500 is, is that additional expressway project.
So if that project comes out, it would be about a wash?
Heck, yeah, got it.
Thank you.
Of course. And like I said, it's like, you know, as we kind of work through the budgets and things like that, there's going to be adjustments and things like that, so, you know. We have not received, just to kind of make a note, we haven't received our transportation aid estimates yet. And so hopefully, we, we'll see an increase in those. But they can also go down too, so as soon as I get that, I'll update, update those.
Tim, I have a question. Have any departments, I mean, looking through it, with creative ways to increase revenue? Waterpark, I mean, parks?
Yeah, I mean, we have the, you know, for, you know, the various departments have, you know, fees that they charge, charges for service. I mean, some of the hard part is, is that, you know, under the levy limit law, there's certain fees that you can't establish, so it's like safer garbage collection. You know, we said, you know, there's, there's municipalities that have just a separate, they don't levy for it. They put a separate fee on, on the tax bill. In the levy limit law, you, if you establish that fee, you have to reduce your levy by the amount of that fee. And so you, you don't really gain anything from that. You know, actually, one of them is the stormwater utility fee, that at, at a point in time, the state legislature said, you know, you could, if you establish that fee, you have to reduce your levy. Wisconsin Rapids was fortunate that we had established that fee a number of years prior to that, so we were grandfathered. So, you know, it's, it'll, depending on what the fee is, can determine if, I, I do believe the one that's exempt is a recycling fee. So if we were to say we want to set a recycling fee, you know, to collect the recyclables and stuff, I do believe that's a, that is allowed and not as part of the levy limit.
Thanks, I just find it interesting, you know, I know how much compost or garbage collection fees have gone up a lot. But, you know, when it, when it came time, I still remember the gentleman standing here, who was a contractor and said, you guys could charge more for contractors using that, you know, we could set it higher, and we chose not to. I'm just, I mean, I know, I know it's not enough, the 466,000, but I'm just saying, it'd be nice if we would start to think of ways that we could increase our revenue. You know, we have the water park, we have, you know, the compost, I mean, there's other things that we could do. I mean, I just wondered if any department heads had thought out of the box and had come up with anything creative like that, so that's just why. Thank you. One other thing, sorry. And I noticed, I'm not picking on the water park, but I just noticed like the replacement reserves, we have just the 20,000 dollars going in every year. And we all know that that's not going to cover it. I know, I believe, Mayor, you're talking, I know, we were talking about that before, in that we'd like to get, start getting some of those pumps, because if the pump goes down, now granted, one pump doesn't run the entire water park. There are different pumps in the water park, from what I remember, based on the volume it has to put out for different activities within the, the water park. But if a pump goes down, I mean, it's, so the whole park's not going to be shut down, it's just going to be one portion of it. However, what would we do? You know, I mean, if things go bad, and we have to shut it down, we're, we already know we're paying on that, plus the interest, and, you know, so how can we build that up more or have that replacement fund?
Yeah, it's really about where we're going to shift the money from, because with being that we're short 470,000, technically, if you don't, if you borrow, you know, we have to take money from one other account to start creating that account, because we don't have that surplus. Yeah, and I agree, you know, you know, fees can help create a surplus, which is good, but, you know, some, sometimes though, we could end up pricing ourselves out. Yeah, we'll raise the fee, but it'll be a wash because less people use it. And so it's the matter of trying to define that sweet spot. And I know there's going to be discussion on a non-resident or resident fee there, and, you know, that could help, or you could see a reduction because less people use it. But it's worth looking at. But yeah, it's really about where you want to prioritize shifting these, these replacement accounts, and where that priority is, and where you want that money to go. If you want it to go to aquatics, or if you want it to go to equipment, and, you know, I, I think, you know, looking at other budgets and other capital plans, you know, there's a lot of communities that borrow for their replacement of equipment and vehicles and things like that, where, where we're set ahead here, where, where we are charging that out, and we have money to replace. And we're not going out and borrowing for those type of purchases, which I think puts us in a pretty good spot, definitely. But yeah, as for the what, you know, I'm concerned too, because yeah, you could lose a pump, and they might shut down the slide, a slide or something like that. And so, yeah, we need, ideally, they would had the similar pumps there, but it's, every pump is different. And so we'd like to have a backup of the main things, and then we can put that in, send that broken pump off to be rebuilt, so we have one to be able to interchange, and so that's the goal.
Yeah, and for the aquatics, you know, right now, we have about, in the reserves for the aquatics for kind of some of those things, we have about 144,000 that's sitting there, so that if a pump would go down, there are funds there to fund that type of stuff. Obviously, when you look at the amount of money that went into that facility and the equipment, you know, the challenge to anything like that is, if you were to sit there and say, okay, the useful life is 15 years, divide that out, you know, whatever that number calculates out to, say it's, you know, 100,000? out to, say it's, you know, $100,000 that you have to put aside a year, you know, when you really look at, like, look at your levy limits now, is that, you know, we're only allowed an increase of $84,000. And that covers the entire budget of all the inflationary wage and benefit increases and things like that. And one of the challenges under that is, is, you know, how do you fit some of those replacement type items into your budget? And how are, you know, you can put them in your budget, but then how are you going to fund it? You know, and, and that's a challenge. I mean, I think we do have some good replacement counts set up for a lot of our equipment and things like that, but, you know, where, you know, we kind of fall short is, is, you know, for a lot of our building improvements and trying to come up with the funds for that. I mean, we've, over the years, you know, those funds have been tried to establish, but they just never made it through the, the budget process, you know? And now with, with levy limits, you're kind of, your hands are kind of tied unless you're going to find the funding for that in a reduction in expenditures somewhere else. Or creating a fee that would be allowed or anything like that, so.
How are the ARPA funds going? I mean, I know we had discussed that as a council, you know, that, you know, everyone kind of turned in plans.
Yep.
I mean, I don't know, to me, I mean, to keep the, to keep the city viable and moving forward, I mean, our facility, I mean, building streets, building streets. I mean, and I know we had talked about this at Public Works and other committee meetings as well, you know, Tom remembers how many 20 years we've been talking about A Street? And every time, you know, we try to, okay, we're not going to do any work on it, so the city, or the state comes in and can look at it and see how terrible it is. Well, we can't leave potholes, you know, I mean, three feet wide, so we have to fix it, fix it, fix it, fix it. And, you know, and I remember, weren't we on the list? I can't remember, but then didn't Joe Icese say that they, whatever, and then we're gone until 2030 or something like that, I thought? It was like, you know, so you think, figure out what the cost is to repair it constantly.
Yeah.
I mean, you think of your house, but it's like, you know, I mean, are there ARPA funds that we can use or any money for the transportation money that the feds had or anything like that, that we could, that we can tap into? I know you don't want to use those for, you know, create something and then how are we going to, how are we going to fund, you know, keep funding it? But for something like that with streets or buildings or something like that, I know the Centralia Center has the roof problem. I mean, is there something that we can do with that?
I agree with you. And for me, and what I'd be advocating for is that, and ARPA fund discussions will happen throughout, you know, a budget meeting, but that those funds are used for something that as taxpayers, we're going to have to pay for something in the future. Not something new, but something like a Centralia roof. You know, that's going to be put on all of us, that, that has to be done. Or, or some other project that has to be done that will be funded by taxpayer dollars. If we can maybe kind of avert that and use ARPA funds for that, I think that makes the most sense. But that'll be a greater discussion that we need to have, and that'll be happening through this budget process.
Yeah, I was going to say that, you know, one of these committee of the whole meetings, that's, that'll be one of the focuses, is looking at those ARPA funds, looking at the requests. And as, you know, and the first thing is, is, as everyone becomes more familiar with the budget, what we have in it, you know, that kind of lends a little bit more meat to the discussion of like, okay, you know, take something we just discussed with the expressway, you know, and that project. You know, right now in the budget, it's, it's funded through the, through the property tax level. We all know we have a deficit there. You know, is that a project that if the, the council decided that we wanted to go through and it was worthy of doing that project, that could be an appropriate use of those ARPA funds to fund that project as opposed to using tax levy to prove it?
Thank you. I just, I just want to keep, you know, that in the back of everyone's mind. I'm not saying that here's a free bank account, that we can always use that, but I mean, our street, I mean, we're doing less than or just a titch over a mile a year, you know what I mean? Expressway, A Street, you know, we have to have those streets. And it just, I just hate seeing us out there piddling around every single year, you know, just trying to piece stuff together. But I agree with you, you know, Shane, that, you know, yes, it's, the state should be paying for that, but how much are we going to pay in 10 years? You know, I don't, I don't know. And then I had just one other question, Tim, about the stormwater utility. How, I mean, I know it always goes up, but how is that, how is that calculated? You know, what the percent is that we get billed every month?
It's based on equivalent residential units. So a resident, a household is, you know, is assessed one equivalent residential unit, and that's based on the impervious material. And then when you get into some of the larger properties that have parking lots and things, that a calculation is done where they're assessed, based on the square footers of their impervious material, they could be assessed like five ERUs and things like that, so.
And in, and in the 2023 budget, now refresh my memory, for the transportation utility, those funds, because we had to pay for those assessments, in the 2023 budget, is that? Like the ones that, like Chase Street, the ones that happened that weren't billed?
Right.
We had to pay for those because there was, because we didn't build the property owners.
Right. Well, yeah, the way it happened is that we would fund the construction of the actual property, like Chase Street, we would fund that, that project. And then we would assess the, the property always assessment fee. And then basically those were collected and then accounted for as a revenue in the, in the general fund to offset the tax levy, you know? And then, so then when we created the transportation utility, approximately $350,000 was earmarked to replace that lost revenue, because going forward, we're not going to be billing special assessments for any of those projects. And then the 150,000 was going to go towards mill and overlay.
I guess just staring at this number here a little bit, so what I understand is 470,000 were in the hole to basically 200 and, or 2,400,000 if we're in the hole even deeper. So, so right now, we're just in the hole, for sure. What, we could not do that road and get that 700,000 back and pay off that 470,000 or 600, whatever it was, but, I mean, it's, I mean, what I'm seeing here is like, we're kind of screwed either way, right? So we have to take out the debt, or we got to dig into, only this stuff that's listed here has the flexibility to come up with that 2,400,000, right? That's, that's the only place that there's flexibility is in the funds that you listed here. That's.
Correct, yeah. Those are just the, you know, obviously the funds are much larger than that, those are just the, the property tax levies that, but yes.
But everything else is accounted for. So it's just this that we get, that there is wiggle room that we can get.
Right. And that's why, if you remember in that budget projection, I, I broke out the funds that, you know, would be subject to, you know, if we weren't going to issue any debt, this is, this is the amount that would be available for reductions that would result in an offsetting reduction in the property tax levy, if we chose levy for those construction projects. So, but like I said, your tax incremental districts and things like that, you know, it's, it's not funded by property tax levy, and it's, you know, it's, it's one of those, like, even like the room tax, you know, that's another fund, because that's, that's, those expenditures are funded directly by the room tax that we collect, there's no property tax levy. So reduction in there wouldn't necessarily offset the property tax levy. So that's why I kind of say these are the funds that are, you know, where reductions would have to be made on the expenditure side or revenue enhancements, you know, to help offset, lower the tax levy.
Are we, I'm not saying that we don't charge enough, but my questions are, revolve around our, when we, when we do the new construction projects, the water, WWLC pays for the electricity and the water supply, and then sewer, sewer treatment pays for the sewer lines?
Correct.
So we're covering, as the city, we're covering the stormwater discharge lines?
Yeah, the stormwater, yep, infrastructure and the street reconstruction.
Okay, and you said infrastructure there, what does that mean?
The, the street infrastructure, I'm just referring to as if, so the, the reconstruction of the street, which includes the, you know, obviously the asphalt or concrete paving plus the curb and gutter, and then, and then the storm sewer infrastructure, which includes all the storm pipe and the catch basins and.
So are we charging, in our opinion, I guess, is the opinion, are, are we charging enough? And are we just having them pay for the utilities that they're putting in there, this sewer treatment and WWLC? Or are they helping us with the actual process of digging out the labor and the machinery and everything that goes into making that happen for their utilities?
Right. We, we issue our job numbers for each of the four pieces of infrastructure, that being street, storm, sanitary and water. And as the construction crews out there working on the specific pieces of infrastructure, they actually charge their actual time and materials to that job number. And then those water, the water main and the sanitary sewer job numbers, at the end of the year, accumulate the total cost of all that and then bill those utilities for that work.
So it's divvied up as close as we can get it to what?
Correct.
And water light does provide labor also.
Oh, okay. All right. So if we were to actually skinny down the, the levy for what we're getting from them to include the, the streets and then our $470,000 deficit also, does that change? Like the levy itself is, when there's levy limits, is that based on something, or is, are they just saying, this, this is all you get? This is all you got, so you got to figure out how to get it out of your, out of your residents?
Correct. The laws, as you can see, that, that's the actual calculation. So they take your previous year's tax levy, and you're allowed to increase it for net new construction, and you know, and that's based on, you know, we get that number, and you can see it was 84,000, so they're saying the maximum you, for net new construction is 84,000. And then you're allowed, debt service is exempted from levy limit. So that's why you're allowed that, that adjustment for whatever your debt service tax levy is. And you can plug that in there. And then that's, and that's, what they're basically saying is that's your allowable maximum levy limit. It doesn't mean that your levy limit can't be less than that.
Right.
But that's the maximum, you can't go over that amount.
And that doesn't go up year after year?
It's basically based on net new construction.
Only if you got net new construction, but it doesn't go up as a cost of living type situation for the city.
If you look at the, the bottom of page one, I've given you a historical since 2013 through 2022, the amounts of the net new construction that were allowed under the levy limit law.
2021 was Metalko? In 2021, our net new construction went up 329,000. That was because of the construction of Metalko? But yeah, those kind of things kind of help.
So I know we, we met all week, and again, thank you for setting that up and let me be a part of that, I appreciate it. Can't say that I took a whole lot out of it in terms of, you know, where's the money? Do you, I know, kind of part of the discussion at one time was, how deep do you guys dive into the departmental budgets? Probably more than we are able to, but still giving them the freedom to be the department heads and, and come up with their own budget. Do you guys see, do you see any possibilities in, in where the budget is and the operational expenses as to where the, you know, all this money could come from?
I guess, you know, I've talked about it, and I'll publicly say it too, is that, you know, this started probably a decade ago, you know, through past mayors, you know, there's been a large number of staff reduction through attrition. And so we're kind of getting down, I think you saw that, really, these budgets are bare bones, they have some, maybe some equipment in there, but really, that doesn't add up millions of dollars. And so I think, providing their existing level of service, you know, that, that you see in that budget with not a lot of fluff or extra or equipment that's just, hey, this is cool, we want to buy it kind of thing. And I saw that this week, and, you know, everybody, you know, they're, they're trying to hold and watch the, the budget, because they understand, because, you know, if, if people have things in their budget that might mean some other budget might have to go without. So it's really about trying to balance, providing our level of service that we're providing. And I don't think it's Cadillac service, I think we're providing good city services. And I look at my portion on my tax bill. Obviously, you got all the different county, state, school district, but I look at what I pay for my city taxes, for my police and fire, and my roads are kept clear, and I'm personally satisfied, satisfied with that. But I just don't see a lot of unnecessary in there. And I don't know if you saw anything different. But we tried to have, they tried to point out, you know, that, you know, how they're replacing equipment on a equipment replacement schedule, trying to break up, like in the police department, bulletproof vests are not all done in one year, they do X number in a five-year cycle, so they replace them by the, every five years that they have to, but they're not replacing them all in one. You see that with radios and other equipment, they're trying to spread it out, so we don't have peaks and valleys in our budget. And I think they work really hard at that. And they, you know, you look at the big ones, whether it be fire and police and public works, that, you know, that's, it's an all-year project for, for those people, because they are trying to maintain all those accounts. And you, you can't necessarily predict a, a bad fire or a bad winter, and so, yeah, it's just trying to, trying to hold it there. But I don't think anything is outlandish or anything that I was really concerned about and had to call anybody, buddy out on, is like, did you really need this? And I don't know if you saw anything different, but I, I didn't see that last week.
I know you've been doing a good job too, of trying to find overlaps and, and things that can be combined. Do you, let's just say this is kind of the way of the future, like, I don't know how, with, with levy limits set and intergovernmental support dwindling, like, if you were ever to get the, the budget or everything to be within the budget, we'd have to make some, I don't want to say drastic changes, like, I know it always comes down to, we got to cut people and we got to cut services. Is there any ways of, at this point, looking at it outside the box and rearranging things to be able to combine efforts and, and get the money down? Have you seen anything? Have you guys been talking about anything that might be out there?
Yeah, and like I said on the onset, is that I think you guys are seeing a product of a decade. You know, that, you know, Tom's been here, he's seen all the cuts that have been taking, taking over the years and trying to merge things, people take on additional work, and you're unfortunately picking up the last of the scraps, or you're trying to find the last of the scraps. There's no big sweeping changes that could be made to come up with 2.3, 2.4 million dollars unless you drastically stop some type of service. And it's going to have to be a lot of services, it's not as simply as closing down, like we were talking about the compost site, you know, because you still have, you have people there, such as the Westside compost site, but they're also working in the pit, loading trucks and doing all those things. So they're, they're providing that service in addition to their regular daily activities in that pit. So I, I just think that those big sweeping changes are gone. And, you know, our best bet to try to help, maybe help us out is, you know, we need another big company, or we need construction. But, you know, every community around the country is fighting for that next business, you know, we're, we're in the same boat as everybody else. And, and, you know, those are the things that really can help our budget, but they're few and far in between.
Well, I appreciate all the work that Tom, you guys did beforehand, because if we're still coming up, you know, 2.4 million dollars or whatever else is coming now, then it would have been horrible if we would have kept the government the same size a decade ago or decade and a half, so.
Yeah, and, you know, with technology and equipment, that changes, you know, I, I think our previous mayor, Bud Vrginsky, talked about how they, you have to use the dig, you know, on the road back in the day when he was here, and, you know, so equipment and technology kind of help out that too, you know, and you, you make those adjustments as those become available.
And Tim, if we, if we did get this money into the, miraculously get this money into the levy, does that change anything to do with the levy? Anything to do with the levy? If we got it down, we're just cutting our operations in order to get it done, it doesn't change the levy at all, right? Doesn't affect it?
Well, I mean, it's, well, your, 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 your deficit is based on where you need to get the levy to be, to be under the levy limit calculation.
So the levy's the levy and if wherever we come in below or right at or above, doesn't change the levy at all. The levy stays the way it is for the, for this year.
Well, I mean, the levy can be whatever the council wants it to be. I'm just saying you can't go above the 13,750,000. That's the maximum you're allowed. There's not, but there's nothing to say that you have to, that has to be your levy. I'm just using that as that, that's your baseline to assess where the budget is at.
So it's, it's, yeah, okay, it's the maximum. I can't see us taking a vote on lowering it at this point. But we could if we, you're saying we could if we wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, if you found more money and you didn't need that maximum levy to balance your budget. So if you, if you're short 470,000 now and you found a million, well, then that's gonna adjust your levy potentially.
Alright, thank you.
I just, if I may, um, one thing we have to remember, I mean, the water park, we know we're mayor, sorry. But I mean, it's a thorn in our, I mean, yes, it's a great investment to the community. It, it's great, but when it was voted upon, we knew we're not gonna make money on that. I mean, it, we're just not, it, it's there. We're gonna lose money every year and we just have to remember that. The other thing is, I mean, yes, new growth, we need growth in order to, to grow. But as Mayor said, it's, it's very difficult, um, workforce, having a, a workforce. You know, you have to have a workforce to create new jobs. People aren't gonna come here if you don't have a workforce. I mean, obviously we all know that. And then as fine, as far as, you know, finding money, I mean, yeah, a little here, a little there. I mean, but you know, how far do we go? I mean, are we gonna say to the library, sorry, you know, we're taking 1 million away? Now figure out how you're, what, what, what do you, I'm not picking on you because I love the library. But I mean, I'm just saying if, if people are thinking that, you know, okay, what services are you, are you gonna decree? I mean, that's something, I mean, we just play it past, you know, Mary's House. The library is a good facility for a lot of people to live. I mean, that's their only resource in the community to survive. So I can't see doing that or, you know, for the Parks Department, yes, those are all leisurely things. Are we gonna take the Christmas decorations away? Are we gonna, you know, there's, there's so many different small things, the zoo, you know, all those things. But how far do you wanna go to take away services? You know, that's just, you have to remember that too, so thank you.
And I hate to say it, but those are nickels and dimes, you know, it's not, it's not the big, big sweeps that you need, you know, you can take away. Yeah, you know, everybody would notice Christmas decorations not there, but really what's the cost? It's, it's so minimal when you, when you spread that out over every taxpayer. You know, I, I think one number out of anything that's ever shocked me since I became mayor, it's a half a million dollars we pay for street lighting and maintenance. You know, it's a half a million dollars for street lights and maintenance. Just to keep the lights on, a half a million, it's just, yeah, so a lot of things are nickels and dimes, but those are the things that you'll really notice. And, and on an overall budget, it's not gonna change it that much.
And one thing I know they were going and. Ryan, maybe you can help me, but were they not going to more, you know, LED lighting? And I mean, you know, at the parks, the new parks and you know, they're trying, they're trying to make it more friendly.
And in the streetlights? Yeah, I think, yeah, yeah, probably, probably the cost to more to be more efficient, but. But yeah, even the streetlights, you can see they're changing those and they're, they're switching, but yeah, it's expensive.
I think that a lot of those, uh, smaller things nickel and dimes will add up pretty quickly. Sure you had brought up the zoo, I mean. The zoo's only open for, I don't know, it's not that long. I mean, it's pretty cool, I've been down there a couple of times this year. Is it $106,000 cool? I have a question about the, the mead field. I was wondering why that is so much more than Witterfield? Is it because Witterfield brings in money through the rafters?
Well, Witterfield is basically Witterfield, I mean, the field and, you know. Really the maintenance there is, there's not, you know, you have some grass cutting, you have some of the utilities, but the rafters maintain a lot of that. We have the supplies for the, the reason why mead field, or mead field increase is because the splash pad. Maintenance and utilities are accounted for in, in, in mead field because that's where it's located. So that was one of the increases in, you know, the mead field expenditures was the, the establishment, you know, the creation of the splash pad there.
Yeah, we have quite a few parks throughout the city. Is there a way to know like which parks are being used? Cause I've been to like the Sands Park and every time I'm over there, there's nobody up over there. And that's a, a pretty big park over there. Is there any way that we can know if they're being utilized or not? I mean, because if they're not being used, we're looking at net new construction, they could be developed into something. If they're not being used, we should do something with them. Also, um, you had. On page one here, you went back to 2013 for net new construction. You have 11,641,000 for this year? Where did that number come from?
The state of Wisconsin provides that with the reports from the assessor's office and then also, you know, the state manufacturing. You know, that's cumulative and the state then notifies if this is what your net new construction was.
Okay, I have the state number as 8,492,400. That is from the state and also from our local assessor came up with that same number. But it's still at the point 7.0%.
Yeah.
And while he's looking, I believe and I can double check, but I was, the way I understand is if you have park space designated in your community, if you get rid of a park, you have to create a new green space. So yeah, once we have a park, it's a park. So designating a park, it needs to be a serious thing.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm just saying that if they're not being used, they need to be utilized in some way. And if there's any way that we could, uh, bring in some more tax revenue with that, that would be good.
We have a park plan and those part, those, you know, ideally based on that park plan, you know, trying to tick off some projects in that plan. To help maybe better value those parks or utilize those parks.
I really liked this that you did on page one with the net new construction, going back to 2013. I think that's like, this chart here shows. Exactly like how our city hasn't been growing. If you look at the state averages, I went back to 2016. So we have seven years of state averages. Six out of the seven years, Wisconsin Rapids has underperformed. Even to the not compared to local, other cities that are close to our size. They way under, we way underperform compared to them. But just at the state average, the state average is typically about 1.6%. So is there any? Is there any way that we can? Bring in new, new revenue, like you're talking about the businesses. And developing of the, the mill site, I think that's, might possibly be one too. Do you have any, any ideas as far as other than?
You know, I think there's a lot of factors that go into it, you know, you look at proximity from an interstate, there's, there's a lot of factors in why maybe businesses aren't so keen to locate here. I couldn't tell you those specifically, cause I've never, I haven't had the opportunity to talk to a business and then them say, well, we're not from the Rapids for this reason. You know, Metalko, we ended up, you know, through incentives and proposals, they ended up choosing to come here. And there's always. You know, I know Kyle's always entertaining, talking to developers, talking to people. You know, and it's just, but I, I think nowadays that it's just, you know, brick and mortar as, as with popular. So you know, everybody wants all this retail, but we're so happy to drive over to pull over to retail that. Why would those retail stores wanna build here? Cause that's, you know, more brick and mortar costs, more employees, more all those factors that, you know, if we're willing to drive. You know, it, it kinda undercuts that, but. I, I haven't talked to a business that had any specific reasons why they wouldn't wanna come here. We're just trying to entertain and discuss with anybody that reaches out to us. And then Kyle works with developers that he knows and trying to develop housing projects and those kinda things.
I think also you look at, yeah, the mill closed in 2020, but it wasn't like between like 2005 and 2020. All the changes in the mill, it wasn't like the mill or the paper company was thriving in any way. I mean, three different owners, um, throughout the time, paper business struggling. I mean, we have to go back, if you wanna look at history that way. We have to go back to the fact that that pretty much was everything for the town. And yeah, when it closed, that was a big final number and it was a shock, although the numbers that they were generating in the paper business in relation to other paper companies and other paper towns. Were pretty minimal, otherwise they wouldn't have kept selling it to a new page, Verso or Enso. I mean, along the way, the paper business was struggling and even though this was premier mill, mill for coated paper. The use of paper has been gradually going down, especially in coated paper, magazines and newspapers are going down. And that with, without that. Input or without that part of our city, whether it was after it was closed or even during the dying business, that's gonna change the revenue that we have substantially. And I don't think people take enough thought into that. Gotta replace that somehow. Metalko was a start, but.
Okay, so I think a good measure of success for the community development would be this chart that you have right here. And as you can see, community development, I don't know, sure they're willing to talk to people or they actively going out and getting people. Obviously not, because if you look at other communities that don't even have a community development system, they're still growing. So, um, I would think that having a, a community development department. We should be growing. At least a half a percent more than the state average. And they should definitely pay for themselves in that way. And just one other quick question. On, uh, page four of the budget fund, you have the Humane Society listed at 76,500. Isn't the Humane Society like a, it's not really a government?
We pay for the service, so we get charged for all the communities that use the Humane Society. You wanna, the date, we get a charge for that.
Correct, that's our, we have a contract with them each year to provide services for, for stray animals or surrendering of animals. And so all the, of the various, uh, communities, uh, pay into the support that, for that service. And, um, I, I do believe this is way before my time, but years ago, the city actually used to perform that service and it was pretty. Not, it was, it was a good thing that we don't do it anymore, put it that way.
We weren't very humane.
And so, but that's, we have an annual contract with them for, you know, for the services they provide with stray and surrendered animals.
Thank you, that's all I have for now.
On the net new construction, uh, I, I, the eight million is correct. The 11 million was the projection I did for the projected budget back in June and I just forgot to change that number. So, but the point seven that in there is the correct.
I think probably the question is, is how do you wanna go forward now with meetings?
So we'd talked to finance about a couple more committee of the whole, I'm sorry. We had talked to the finance about a couple more committee of the meet, committee of the whole meetings. Is doing these types of meetings in, in a committee of the whole rather than in finance department, so. Department budget talks, yeah, for individual budget department talk. So we would go forward with that or how many meetings were we thinking on that?
I would say, I would say a minimum of three.
And by what date were we talking that you wanted to have several of them done by?
Well, I mean, I know we had talked about when we were scheduling the November 1st finance committee, kinda set it up the same way we did tonight. Where it's like have a finance committee, but then have a committee of the whole on the budget. You know, and then, you know, obviously between now and, and that date, scheduling a, a couple more committee of the holes. Or it really depends on, you know, what, what the council's wishes are as far as, you know, how, you know, how much they wanna, how many meetings they wanna have to address the issues in the budget. You know, I, I think the intent, um, at those committee of the whole is to have some of the larger departments. You know, with like the public works, you know, public safety.
Library.
Library. You know, kinda presenting over their budgets with the, with the committee of the whole. And all of that, that way, you know, all the older persons have, you know, an opportunity to have their input or ask their questions, you know, on those departmental budgets. Plus, you know, any other, if they have questions on some of the, you know, smaller operating budgets, certainly, you know, let us know. We can have that person attend that meeting to, to address some of those questions.
Or, or even email, you know, if there's this, one of the smaller departments, you have a question, just feel free to email the department head and maybe ask him about that number. Or we can easily have him come in.
And like I say, if there's, you know, if there's any additional information that you'd like to see or I can provide, please let me know. I'm happy to, you know, I know it can get a lot of, you know, I guess I try to kinda present stuff that, you know, would be of interest. But sometimes, you know, it's like there's a specific analysis you wanna see or anything like that. Please let me know, but also in the meantime, you know, I'm still going through the budget, looking at a lot of the things. You know, one of the big calculations I do is, is that, you know, with our cost system labor, you know, that being the street department, park department, engineering. You know, they have various budgetary accounts, they don't have one budget account where all their wages and benefits are accounted for because they have so many different varying activities. And so as the departments submit their, their budgets and they estimate what they're gonna need for, for wages and incidental labor. I always go through and do an analysis and make sure that the amount of wages and benefits for the cost system employees. You know, what I estimate it's gonna be for 2023, that the budget reflects that. So we're not either under budgeting or over budgeting. So, you know, I'm in the midst of, of that analysis too. Um, I just got our workers comp mod factor in and it's actually a little bit lower than what I had plugged into the budget. So we'll see a, a small, it's not a big change, but a small savings there. And like I said, we got transportation aids, that's our last one that we're, we're gonna be getting in. So, you know, I'm still working on some of that stuff. So, you know, any of those changes that impact the budget, obviously I, I keep track of and will, you know. Give you those, what those changes are throughout the budget.
Dean?
Yeah.
So I think tomorrow I'll look at the calendar for this room and I, I can get that information out or through the clerk. And see what nights are available for people, we could kinda do a poll and, but yeah, I'll be dependent on the court schedule in here.
Yeah, what I was thinking and welcome input, if you were saying two to three meetings, I was thinking maybe. Welcome input, you were saying two to three meetings, I was thinking maybe public works and safety for one.
Do you want police, fire and public works on one night?
They should probably be on two separate.
Okay.
I'd say, yeah, public works basically should have its own night. Police and fire another night and then library aquatics and any miscellaneous another.
Engineering will be a big one too that you'll want to. Well, yeah, okay, yeah, we'll have the same on public works.
Engineering and public works in the same one.
Yeah, we could probably do parks there also at the same time.
I think, yeah. When then, safety. On its own and then library.
And maybe library and then any other municipal or. Smaller budgets, if you want to have any discussion with, in the same time as library.
So three meetings between now and the end of the month then.
Is that enough for everybody with that? Or we can always schedule another one too if questions come up.
Okay, so if you just meet with me and then we'll put together, let me know the schedule and then I'll put a notice for three of them.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Yeah. That's, it's fine however, whatever how many meetings we want, but I think the one. And maybe there is a way we can find something, but. The operation, unless there's a drastic cut. The operation is pretty much at bare bones. You can't cut more people. Without cutting services. And vice versa, I guess. So it's a. May, maybe there is something, but. It's, it's become the way the, the game is played unfortunately. So it's just. Maybe with the departments coming in or something, maybe there'll be something we can see, but. To provide the services. Costs money. And. Just. It's something that's there. So I guess what we, where we go, where we go from here, that's fine, I guess have, you know, meetings we can, maybe there'll be something, maybe somebody will get enlightened by it, but we'll see. You know, it's just. You guys have gone over the budget, the departments have gone over the budget and. So I guess we just. To operate the city. I don't see that there's anything wild in there, I think as far as. You know. Frills. There aren't. That I'm aware of. So if there's a way to. Do something or if there is a way to raise money. But, you know. Short of a. I drove through. What would get you though is drive through, I had to go up to. Point today, so drive through Plover and that, you know, I just, every time it seems like I go through there is another building being built. I thought one, one was being remodeled today, but no, another new one was going up there on B, BB. So it's just, you know. We have to get something in and yet you drive in our community. Who that would be, I don't know, but then you look like we're Sears left there in the department, you know, that stretch there. It ain't just Sears that's vacant in that block. There's more than that, so it's just. Something. As it is, we're surviving. Where we live, we can't cut out snowplow and ice. And sitting here again, you know, listening to or whatever that. Thinking about. Doing just over a mile of road. A year. Somebody that was born. This year. If they lived a hundred. Won't see. Well, what, about five eighths, what we have now, about five eighths of the roads would be done, redone. In a hundred years. That mean that three eights, if my number is right. Would be left not touched. So that's why the. Or maybe, maybe we save money over the last decade or whatever, but we've cut things to the bare bones that. That's just about all that can be done. So unless there is someplace to find, someplace to cut. I hope somebody could find it, but. I'm not going to hold my breath waiting to, waiting for that to happen because it's just. And that, that's not to be a. A doomsayer, it's just the facts of where we're at. Until some. Business comes into this community. This area, whatever. We got what we got. I just had to say that, I guess, before we wrap it up tonight, because it's, you know, we can have. And I'm not against having the committee of the whole, so I didn't, I didn't mean to do that, but I think it's just. I, I hope we could find something, maybe when the. People from the bigger departments come in, maybe there'll be, you know, be something, but. I just. With all, with all drastic cuts somehow. We're, we're at where we're at.
And I think the, we decided to go with the budget meetings for, for the public also, like wanted to be able to make sure that the public had a chance to see them all. Not necessarily looking for more stuff at that point in time, I don't think we'll be duking it out at that time, but. And it's, also I don't think that we can. I mean, I want, I want to, you know, understand what you're saying, Tom, but I also feel like we can't. Sit around, I guess I'm just not the kind of person that sits around and waits for somebody to save me, I just don't think they're coming. So I think we as a community have to. Stop living in the past and start looking to the future as to what do we want to become, and I know that's not necessarily the city's job, but. It certainly helps if the city. Kind of has a, a direction to lead the way to some degree, at least if it's not just in morale. As to say, you know, we want new businesses to be here and there's a lot of people that live in the area that I think. Are capable of developing and growing their businesses and I think we're standing a better chance at. Building the economy from within our existing economy and the people that are here versus. Waiting for some big wig to come along with the big, you know, smoke stack. I don't think that's happening, I think we got real fortunate with Metalco and that's because they're. Right in the heart of all the aluminum factories in, in the Northwoods, you know, so. It does help that we have an amazing electrical infrastructure and I think we got to make sure we. Sell that to, you know, anybody who's looking. So one last question I have, Tim, so these, all these funds here on description, property, tax, levy, surplus deficit. These, these are all funds, but these are all kind of above and beyond, like they all have their. All these departments or whatever they are, they. They have other money, these are just funds in addition to the department? And maybe not all of them, because I see this retiree health insurance fund like that, you can't take away from that or isn't that a?
Well, yeah, I mean, but it is, you know, partially funded with, with the property tax levy, but yeah, I mean, those are benefits that people retired with. So, you know, it'd be very questionable, like all of a sudden, okay, we're just going to take retiree health insurance.
Well, I wouldn't take it, but I mean.
What I'm saying is a reduction in the benefit.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you know, and that's a, you know, it's a good example of like. You know, the types of things is, is that, you know, that's a, you know, that's a, it's a, a big cost to the city and a lot of other municipalities. Don't have retiree health insurance and, you know, and, you know, we, we, we recognize that, you know, that was a, you know, an expensive benefit and it's a good benefit. But that's why back in two thousand and twelve, you know, we changed it to where anyone that was hired after a certain date. Was no longer eligible for retiree health insurance, so as, as new employees, as employees retire or. Go to a different job, the, the new hires that come in, we don't have that benefit, so like over time. You know, it'll take a number of years, you'll see that, that, that benefit, that cost go away. You know, that's one of the proactive things that, you know, we, we look at, we have in the past, you know, to kind of get some of those costs under control.
So. I mean, I'm just looking at like. Let's just say if we did cut money, everyone's going to be ticked at us, right, or at least the people that vote for it. Nobody enjoys having budgets cut or, you know, getting less money, I mean. And, and again, with the hard part here is like, if the majority of people don't care if we go in debt every year to run the city. Then we're kind of fighting a uphill battle or, or a battle, battle that doesn't even matter, I guess you got to really want to keep the city safer. And I, and that's all relative to in terms of their financial debt. But in reality, if we wanted to make a tough choice, if what I'm hearing is these, these are the ones that are flexible. Then by percentage, you could take a certain chunk out of each one of those funds and get the two point four million dollars and make a lot of enemies, but you could. Yeah, okay, thank you.
But, but, but with that, you know, just say that whatever, wherever you take, excuse, excuse, whatever you take. Or, you know, you can say a hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand, seventy-five. That's money. But how do you get that? You just don't subtract a hundred thousand dollars. There's an effect in that department. And fifty thousand, you know. So, you know, and I know, I know, you know, but that, that's just, so it, it's, it is a number game, but it's a. Service and the people game that goes with it too. And I think. The one, the comment probably that you made a few minutes ago, Matt, probably is maybe. It's probably one to go on. And. That, what, 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 what do we want? What do we want this city to be? I don't think that's an exact quote, but that's what you said, I think, and so. Do you want? So then if you look at that hundred thousand, seventy-five thousand, whatever here and there, this and that. Is that the city you want to be? You know, it's just, because you're going to, you're going to. In most of the cases, you're going to lose some, something, service, some type of, you know, people. There's not much left, I don't think, where people can double up anymore. You know, it's just. It's a, I think that's, that's probably a key, a key thing maybe to keep in mind is. Of some of the things you're looking at. Of what's, what do we want the city to look like or be? And. We all may have a different viewpoint of that, I'm just saying that, that's what, you know, what you mentioned there and. My concern is. Where I'd like, you know, people like to see taxes go down and that type of thing, but. They're not to borrow money, but. It's the nature of the beast. To go lower than what we are, we're going to lose something. And that for sure adds to, I think, where people would not. Come here, I, and I think it's a great thing to try to get. Businesses here, whatever, to build from within, that, that's terrific. And if they could build something from inside like. Paul's did with that. That'd be great. But that's, that's one of those things that. Somebody comes up with and it, it happens. So I think it, it's something that. The build from within is terrific. It can be, but. I think that can go along with then if still try to attract something to come in. A quality business and, you know, the brick and mortar stores or something, but smoke stacks or something, but, you know, have. Tended to go by the wayside, but there's just. For me, it's to not, while we try to see what we, what we want the city to be or what our own opinions are. For me, it's, don't give up what we have. If there's a way that we can. Grow out of what we're doing. Fine, for me anyway, but. To cut, to cut more things than that. Have people come here would be even the people who live outside of the community. You know, if you start losing more. They won't have any reason to come in here for groceries eventually from Grand Rapids and that. So it's just. So it's, it's. We're in a tough spot and it's, but. Nature of the beast is, you know, that two million dollars is to do. Mile and an eighth or whatever highway. Sounds crazy. That's, 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 that's where we are. So I think we can have the meeting. Have the meetings, I guess, maybe we can come up with something, but to me, it's. I don't want to see the city go backwards. There's a way we can cut the money or something, if there is a way for that, without losing things, that's fine, that'd be good. But to go backwards is, I think, gives the city a bigger black eye and trying to then move forward. And there are things that the city does have that. Is there. It's not getting what we want maybe, but there are things that attract, could attract people to come here. From the schools to the. Aquatics to the, to the zoo, to the. You know, the. New facility at the high school there, the sports complex and that, I mean, the hockey that we've had for years. You know, we do have things here, I think we shortchange ourselves sometimes. And the stuff we have. We have a lot of stuff. And are adding stuff over the years that it can be a selling point. And it is something that comes here. My. Youngest daughter came home from, they live in Sun Prairie. Her and her family had two little kids. One turns three next month, the one just turned one in August. They came back. And she's going to be twenty-nine in November. Daughter. The one above her is going to be thirty-one and there's a bunch above that too, but anyway. She comes back and they, they took them to that, they went to the aquatic center, whatever the rates were to get in and that. Why didn't we have that when she was growing up? Cause we didn't have a pool. They had to take people and go to Black River Falls or wherever, find facility. But we could have done it in Rapids, but we didn't have it. We have things that people want. We have things that can be a selling, attract people. We just, you know, it's, it's the hard thing to do and it's really hard thing to do when you're sitting 20 miles off the interstate. And just not 20 miles off the interstate, you got the university, that's another five miles north upon the interstate. All the medical things that have gone in up there. Not that we don't have that too, but uh, you know, it's just, that's like a magnet. We're the 20 miles off the interstate. You wouldn't think that would do it. That's hoping when 54 was made four lanes, that that was going to be a savior. Well, it's been how many years since that's been? A long time. And so it just uh, just don't give up. Don't give up things that we have that people want. People don't like paying their tax, something they like, want to pay their taxes, whatever. Why do I have to pay for the aquatics when I don't use it? If they're 75, 80 years old or 60 even, or 50 and don't go there at all. It's something that benefits the community. And we're all in it together. I'm not running for anything on this speech here either. So it's just uh, we just have to somehow plug along and do what we can. Try and get what we can. Here, we know where approximately, we, we got an idea what it's gonna be to go with. So it's just uh, how can we, how can we either reduce what we gotta pay or at least keep it where it's at? Keep the services that we got. I'm just gonna be quiet because I, there's other things I got in mind too, but we'll let them go till later on.
Yeah, just quick. I think uh, I feel the biggest issue facing the city has been brought to light tonight and that's lagging growth. Uh, we provide a high level of service as a city. Um, but as Mr. Delaney mentioned, the numbers don't lie. Um, so I think being creative about development is, is, is something that we really need to, to strive to do. You know, I, I look at the mill as an opportunity. Uh, the Rapids redecover, uh, redevelopment and recovery plan headed up by Van De Wall. Um, I think that's a step in the right direction. We need to take more stock in what they're doing. Um, we also uh, should try to keep them accountable to, to their proactiveness. Um, so pushing on that uh, to make sure it's getting the attention it deserves, I think is important. Um, I don't see a lot of support all the time at the planning commission and things like that where these, these updates are discussed. So, you know, those are the times to ask the questions, you know, about, about what we're gonna do with the situation with the mill and, and try to, try to, try to gain and make it into a positive, um, instead of the negative that it is. Um, also in speaking with Paul Volart, our, our street superintendent, you know, he's got some ideas about potentially developing some city property. The city owns quite a bit of property um, within town that is undeveloped. And, you know, creating that opportunity for development is, you know, it can be a gamble, but it could, it could pay off in the long run as well. So we have our work cut out for us. Um, and all I can do i- is say, we need to think outside the box and think about ways that we can, we can develop this city, you know, brick by, big, uh, brick by brick and um, put our nose to the grindstone here. That's all I have. Thank you.
I'm just gonna, yeah, to follow a little bit of what Ryan said is that, yeah, there's some opportunities that we're gonna bring forward on some potential things, how we can develop some underutilized properties. And, you know, that's kind of taking one of those risks. But I think ultimately, I just want to thank Tim. I know it's part of his job, but I know he spends a lot of nights and weekends uh, stressing over the budget, because we all look to Tim to try to solve that issue and it's really not his responsibility. But he asked to, you know, make the numbers work. And I think, you know, under his leadership over the last several decades, you know, we are in a pretty good, and we have healthy fund reserves. We hear that all the time. We have great replacement accounts. Uh, like I said earlier, we're not borrowing for a lot of these, these items that other communities are borrowing for. So thank you, Tim, for that. Um, it's, it's a stressful time of the year for him, um, because of the pressure on, on these numbers and, and how we have expectations of him to try to help us solve that. And so I just want to acknowledge him for his work that he's done on this for, and it's plus we even started. So he, he's got a cyclical time of the year. And so with a lot of reports due to the state and a lot of time that he spends doing that and was starting the budget process early, put a, a little extra burden on him, but I think it was, it was worth doing and just thank you.
I just think it, um, you talk about, I agree with a good percentage of what Tom was saying, but when I, um, having the meetings and whether we find something or not, I think more than, more importantly is um, it gives the department heads an opportunity to talk to us and explain in a public forum, what, what their, what their budget entails and um, justify in fact, why we need it. I'm not denying that we don't need pretty much everything that's in there. Um, but it does give an explanation in a public forum to say, this is why we need it. And I, I think that's a great idea to have specific public or committee of the whole meetings for specific departments. So they can say, so if there's a question, why do we have to have this particular 20,000 here and 50,000 here or whatever we want to call peanuts, you know, or whatever we want to call a big amount. It still gives a good opportunity for each department head to explain why it's gotta be in there. So I think breaking them down into departments and breaking it down into individual meetings like that's probably a really good thing to have. So my thoughts on that. Um, anything else for the good of? Okay, then sounds good. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Meeting's adjourned. And uh,